Want to be on the spot?
Yes.
Just like time being.
Actually, the way that we actually expand here, we got elected sure that where it's registered with them. It's in the.
No, I would have.
We believe that's the truth. Because it's.
Yeah.
Yes. That is. So that's what they.
Too soon.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Time being seven o'clock. Borough Council regular session will come to order. We will start with an announcement that the meetings of Mechanicsburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the Borough's YouTube channel. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic of our citizens. One nation, under God. Indivisible, eternally just.
Roll call, please.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarjun.
Here.
Councilman Booker.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neill.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Cassidy.
Present.
Engineer Johnson.
Here.
Chief Glennie.
Here.
D.C. Hockenberry.
Here.
Manager Nohminger.
Here.
Manager Thompson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? Mr. Booker?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Anyone else? Amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make it.
Vice President Anthony moves.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens' comment. Is there anyone here for citizens' comment tonight? Mr. Hepford?
Thank you. I have a comment about the Miller Anthony Wildlife Refuge at 207 East Simpson. There's a narrative on in the document that I handed out that summarizes the issues there. It seems to revolve around the borough's policy on squatter's rights. The adjacent property owner has secured that property. He's not the owner of 207 East Simpson. And he has secured simply by paying the property taxes in Carlisle. I verified that through the Carlisle Tax Office. No work is being done on that property, and it's going back to nature. In some ways, that doesn't bother me because there are a lot of, there are several possums and raccoons that I feed from my greenhouse, and they seem to reside over there. But still, it seems to be something that the Borough should address in some fashion. And again, the narrative I wrote for you will address possible actions. Thank you.
Mr. Hepford? Yes, sir. Just for clarification, Mr. Manager, could you tell us the status of the
Yes.
Borough's action on the property?
This property at 201 East Simpson was approved by the County Blight Remediation Board back four months ago, July, June-July timeframe. Right now, they're in the process of determining legal ownership so that they can take, take, take ownership of it and then either sell it or demolish it and then sell the land.
The problem is, the property was owned by a woman named Catherine Walker. She died 10 or 15 years ago. She died intestate with no living heirs. So if you're looking for somebody, you're not going to find them.
Well, that's what the county's determination. That's the legal board. That's how we have to do blight of property. It goes to the county. They have that review process, and they make that determination. It's out of the Borough's hand at that point. That's why we use the Blight Board. They will determine.
What's the timeframe on that?
That's the difficult part is that there's some research they have to go through to try to prove ownership or find ownership. So right now, I can't give you any estimate on time.
If they don't find ownership in a year, what happens?
They petition to take ownership. They take ownership. The county will.
Through the courts?
Yes.
Good luck. Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' comment?
Good evening. My name is Bill Gladstone. I am gentleman here with me, David Nguyen. He is a client of mine. About a year or two ago, purchased Kelly's Corner. And Simpson has, that's the one on Simpson Street across from the CVS. And one of the things he brought to my attention, because I don't usually get into this stuff after it's done, it's his. Until it's done, it's mine. But the, at this point here, he brought us to my attention the sewer bill. And we didn't quite know where the right forum is to go because we checked to see that the sewer authority has a meeting that we should go to. But they don't. And apparently, what David was, it was suggested to David, I think by Sarah. Yeah, but Sarah, Sarah, I saw he come here for citizens' comment, and perhaps maybe we can get some further direction. The issue with his sewer bill is he has six units there, and he's being charged $1,700 a quarter, about almost $7,000 a year for sewer. And some of the, one of the units is sitting vacant. Now, there is only one sewer line there, but we understand that. But I'm having trouble understanding, because I go to various townships, municipalities, and they talk about EDUs, and they talk about the gallons per the gallons of water based, sewer based on the gallons of water. But it's kind of a, it's mystifying how he can be charged $60, $6,400, $6,800 a quarter. I'm sorry, a year, excuse me, a year, and only have three restaurants in there. And of the three restaurants, one is a donut shop, so they don't use that much water. Their hours are limited. One's a Chinese restaurant, and the other one is the new one, Simpson Diner. So it's just one of those things where, yeah, they do water, I know. Well, and I know that. So, but there's one that's sitting vacant, and there's, one's the pharmacy, and there's another one, a smoke shop. There's a smoke shop there. They hardly, you know, toilets and sinks. They'd be lucky if they used 20 gallons a day. So how do we address the situation? Because he really thinks, and since I was brought on board, just to talk to him about it, it just seems like it's excessive. How do we go, where do we go from here, and who should we be talking to?
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Mr. Manager, would you like to answer the question?
I could just start by saying that we're aware of Mr. Nguyen's issue, have met with him a few times and explained the current ordinance and the way it's structured. But I'm happy to work with Solicitor to put a formal assessment of his property versus our ordinance together and provide it back to them.
Good. So how do we get that process started?
We'll start it right away.
Okay. And who will you contact for that?
We'll send it to the property owner, Mr. Nguyen.
And so when you get it, you can just send it back. Thank you very much for your time.
Is anyone else here for citizens' comment? Hearing none. Moving on to the consent agenda. There are motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agarjun moves. Is there a second?
Yes.
Vice President Anthony seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda items are approved. Moving on to the regular agenda. Finance Administration Ordinance. Mr. Anthony, anything to note?
We had a budget Finance Administration Ordinance meeting this evening. As you can see, at the bottom of the agenda, there are a few of those coming up, so feel free to join us if you would like as we talk our way through the coming year.
Thank you. Disformed Community Outreach. Anything to note?
Nope.
Nope. Community Economic Development, nothing on the agenda. Public Works and Safety. Turn it over to Chief Police Department Employee Highlight.
Okay. As we started the first meeting last month, we're going to try to bring an officer or, in this case, a sergeant down to meet council every week. And this month, we have Sergeant McCormick, who I hesitate to say Drew Shortstraw. Sergeant McCormick's been with us since 2015. He's been a police officer since 2013. Interesting information is, before becoming a police officer, Sergeant McCormick was in fact one of our CSOPs here in the Borough to reinforce how valuable that program is. Sergeant McCormick will tell you, he is the parent to the best dog in the world. I would argue with him, because I think I am. And he has three brothers, two of which are in law enforcement. He collects Legos. He's a Dodgers fan, so he's pretty happy.
Stupid Dodgers.
He also plays kickball. It's organized kickball league. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant McCormick. I didn't tell her something a little bit about it, but let you guys ask him some questions.
I'll start with the kickball champion this year, finally. Now, I'm hitting 10 years in December here. I'm sure I've met all of you previously. But previously, I was community service officer. Got hired my senior year of high school at Cumberland Valley. I was good friends with Councilman Booker, still am to this day.
Awesome.
Oh, come on.
I previously worked at Charminstown, now Holly, and Harrisburg Police Department, or settled here. But I enjoy this area. I grew up in this area. I live in this area. Hope to stay in this area as long as everything works out. Thank you for having me. Do I open the floor for questions here, or?
I would like to point out one thing that I forgot to mention earlier. The incredible job done by, for National Light Out for the first time in many, many years this year was coordinated by Sergeant McCormick, so I think we all owe some thanks for that.
That was a good job.
For a short time, put together with other Borough staff.
I had a lot of help over here, Erica and Sarah, so please, it's not all on me.
How fast can you run a mile?
Today? I don't know. Back in the day, I could run pretty quick.
Some of these new officers, their run times are not good.
I would still take myself over than any of them.
I have a question for you. So
Yes, sir.
You said you're a kickball champion. So what, what season of kickball do you think is the most competitive?
I'd argue summer because there's only one championship to win, and that's the one I want.
Okay.
What kind of dog do you have?
She's a Jack Russell Wiener mix. Name is Dobby. Looks like the Harry Potter character.
What do you like most about policing in Mechanicsburg?
I like how the community supports us. I know, working in Harrisburg, that wasn't always the case. Here, I don't, I would say the majority of people I deal with are generally happy to see me.
So you're a Harry Potter fan?
Yes.
Yes.
You should see his Lego collection.
Yeah. What's your most prized Lego?
I, when I graduated the police academy, I bought myself The Death Star. So it took a couple of weeks to finish.
That's a big project.
Yes.
What advice do you have for any of the young officers running?
Ah, breathe. I know when I started, the matter of everything got sped up, and you didn't necessarily know what you were doing, but you can slow things down and kind of see what's going on in each moment. You'll have the most success.
Thank you.
That's good. That's good. Pulling up a sergeant.
Year, year and a half. I guess you wouldn't know. It's whenever Sergeant Dyer left his.
How do you like your role there as opposed to the role as an officer?
It's a little more work, but you do get the reward of kind of leading the officers and the younger guys, you know, to what they need to accomplish. Not necessarily telling them what to do, but just kind of, this is the goal. These are the ways you can get there, kind of stuff.
I'd like to add, since I'm leaving, I'd like to thank Sergeant McCormick for his leadership of the Police Department Union Membership. We certainly didn't see eye to eye on everything over the years, but you always handled yourself very professionally and took care of your union members. So definitely job well done for you over the last three years that I've been here.
Thank you for sure.
Can I have one last question? Who has the best beard?
I would say me. I have the beard and the hair at the top.
You're trying. You're trying.
I actually proposed a donation scheme film. I said, we're going to put something out there. We're going to take donations, and whoever donates the most gets to shave Sergeant McCormick's beard. But I don't think he liked that, that idea for fundraiser.
I mean, it's red. Like, I think you should keep it. Like, not everybody can rock a red beard.
I don't remember what I looked like anymore without it.
What's the longest your beard has ever been?
I mean, it's, it's got, I can grow it to four months here, so by the end of January, we'll see.
I'm excited. Like rubber bands?
No, I will keep it neatly trimmed, professional.
Good answer.
I've been trying to disrupt this beard contest forever. If you need jewelry, I know a person. We can hook you up.
Okay.
Oh. What are your thoughts on one-wheels, electric scooters? We'll put a pin in e-bikes.
Reuse yourself.
Because e-bikes are my, I mean, I'm okay with them, but the one-wheels and the electric scooter, what do you think could be done to make them more safe in our community?
More safe? That's, that's a tough task. I know we have the role of enforcing, ideally, if we had, I know we're looked into getting maybe an e-bike to kind of help, you know, follow these individuals, because being in a vehicle is sometimes difficult. You're on foot, they can just take off on you, kind of aspect, so.
Do you think another video as your farewell, that you guys should make an e-bike one-wheel video?
Well, e-bikes are street legal. Electric scooters and one-wheels are not street legal.
I think Councilman Booker would like to demonstrate the illegalities of these devices.
They're not. That's the video you play. Take a picture and put a big.
They are not legal.
These are not legal on the street. All right. You're almost at box.
I think we're all probably at the same page. We're incredibly lucky to have Sergeant McCormick. He is a fine, outstanding officer, and I'm very proud of all the officers in the Police Department and the department in general. I couldn't ask for a better group to come in and kind of just be chosen as to lead that team, and that's what they are. They're you know, in his day, especially Sergeant McCormick, but especially Sergeant McCormick. They're also very team oriented and are always willing to help each other out. And it's, you know, one of the things that I've noticed first, and still notice to this day, is just that the collaboration between all of them and the cooperation and the ability to help each other out. Sergeant McCormick does a good job of leading, and he's, he's kind of coordinates all our community-oriented projects, and excellent job, I can say.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Sergeant. Sergeant.
Discussion on Legacy Park Signal Warrant Analysis.
Good evening. So unfortunately, I don't have as exciting news as the officer highlight previously. The signal warrant analysis we received from Legacy Park and their design engineer stated that they did not believe that a signal was necessary at this time, based on the traffic counts, the essential synopsis of what they submitted. Moving forward, they are supposed to do another traffic study in 2027. Once the build-out reaches, I believe it's another 200 units are built, that set point will trigger another signal warrant analysis, which then they'll do another traffic study, just like this one, to see if the signal is necessary. Ultimately, though, that signal is on a PennDOT road, South Market Street, which means PennDOT does control it. So what they did is they took this report and they did submit it to PennDOT. If PennDOT feels that at this time, even with the, their conclusion being that there's no signal necessary, if PennDOT feels that there is one necessary, they can enforce it. So ultimately, it's up to them and up to the later development of the project.
Did you review their analysis? Like, do we have an opinion?
No, because it's Penn. That's, we can request the analysis, and if, even in the report, per PennDOT, the set points that they had, I believe there were eight set points that they had to reach. If only three or four of those set points total were met, then they still wouldn't necessarily have to put in a signal. In this case, only one was potentially met in 2027.
I think the thing that I'm happy about in the report is that the assessor specifically called out Upper Roundland Township's purposeful blocking of the road at Despina, and I'm glad that they included that and that the, the report as it's written makes it very obvious that that's not necessary. But it says they purposefully did it with no particular reason, other than to push traffic the other direction out of, out of that light.
Interesting, because the report was requested outside of the normal process or the established process that we have, or?
I feel like that's a terminology issue, and that's where Ryan and I were talking about it. Because the, because the report says it was done at the request of Upper Roundland Township, it's confusing. But I do think after we looked into it, that it is a result of the manager's agreement requirement. It's just that they phrased it wrong in the letter. It said it was at the request of Upper Roundland Township, when it really was just at the request of the Borough based on the manager's agreement.
That's good.
So, yeah.
Any questions?
When will we hear back from PennDOT, do you think?
Honestly, yeah. That's a fair question. I can look into it, but I don't.
May I ask a question beyond Legacy Park?
Yes.
The, the manhole on Norway Street?
Yes.
Are they going to, like, raise the manhole, or?
Yeah. So we're actually waiting on a manufactured riser to raise that manhole lip up. It'll be almost flush with the roadway. It's going to be about two weeks. We're going to have to work around it for now, but they will be back to do that as part of the question.
Awesome.
Has to be a social education piece, huh?
Yes. I need to tell people something.
Traffic calming.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I think we exhausted Legacy Parks. Are there any other questions? All right. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Property Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Martin.
Nothing to report. We have a meeting next Wednesday on 12.
Okay. Personnel Committee, update on Borough Manager Transition.
Yes. So Jesse and I have been working turnover issues, and she is going to be in the main seat here at the next meeting. So this will be my last meeting in the chair. And then really, I'm going to continue to work the budget with her and then be available for quite some time, really at hers and your discretion, for any sort of historical information or help through some, some issues. And, but she'll be here next week in the office and ready to go.
While you have the floor, while you have the floor, oh.
Yes. I was going to say, do you have anything to add?
Yes.
No, I'm just really looking forward to getting things kind of fully underway. The transition has been interesting, running, kind of paying attention to both municipalities at this point. So I'm sure Lane's also ready to kind of relinquish some of his duties as well. So, yeah, just looking forward to being here full-time on Monday.
Manager Thompson, while you have the floor, is there anything you want to say now, or would you rather hold it for your resolution presentation?
Oh, yes, sir. I would like to hold that. I do have prepared remarks, but I'd like to hold that. I'd like to hold it for a time where I don't necessarily have to come back. It's that good. Thank you, though. Thank you, though. No, please, not a three-minute time. I need six.
We'll open the floor now to any other citizens' comment. Hearing none, seeing none, moving on to other business on this side of the room?
Yeah, just real quick for council's knowledge, we have, a few weeks ago, Detective Temple and I approached the Legion about funding some equipment for us, and I found out today that they are going to purchase our exterior, the new exterior vest carriers that all the officers wanted. They'll, they'll enable the officers to get some weight off their belts and up onto the vests, and they also accommodate what we call ICW plates, which are rifle, bulletproof rifle plates, or more bulletproof rifle plates. The ICW stands for in conjunction with, so they won't have to take off their regular, their vests anymore. They can put a plate right in there, so it's, it's a bit safer. So we're happy to hear that. We also approached Mechanicsburg Club, and between both of them, I guess they're going to work at, the request was for some e-bikes or a e-bike for our bike patrol, which seems to be the way to go. So they're working on that as well. So really pleased that that will make some progress there. Really pleased we're going to get these new, new vest carriers at a minimum for all the officers paid for by the Legion. So we really appreciate that. I really want to get that out there. I'll make a big deal out of it more and more as we go along, but I figured we'd start at the end. The second thing is, my understanding is, for the first time, here in a couple of weeks, for the first time in probably over 20 years, every Mechanicsburg marked Borough Police Card will look the same. So we're really happy about that. We're really happy about that, and that's my, my report for this, this council period. So thank you all for making a lot of those things possible.
Can you put a ballpark dollar amount on what they are going to be putting out in order for them to pay for the vests?
Yeah, it's, I'd take $7,000 for just the vest carriers.
That's great.
Yes, we did very least.
Yeah.
Will the, will the e-bike be marked as well?
Oh, yes, it will be. It'll say.
No one-wheels?
No, because they're not legal.
They're not freely.
Anything over here?
Yes.
Anything over here?
So I drive by nearly daily this thing on the corner of, next to Joseph James. It looks like work is being done. Is that, is it not being done? Like, can I get an update, or can we get an update?
I think it looks like work has stopped because there's a tarp over it.
Sure. The concrete, the concrete insert for the utilities that had to be repaired after they were vandalized has been set. The vertical pole is going up on Friday, and then the sidewalk and finishing, and the handicap ramp finishing will be two weeks later. And, and then just for my own understanding, we, and by we, we mean the Borough, and in conjunction with PennDOT, I've been operating exactly as we would have in any other location in the Borough of similar, I don't know, in, like, at a similar location, like, everything else is. With the exception of the vandalism and the news reports, yes. Okay. Super.
And the no permit is not, that's fake news, correct?
Right. Right. That's it.
Your turn.
Perfect. Just a big thank you to everyone that helped organize. I know Councilwoman Martin and the churches. I think we had a beautiful event last week in response to the not beautiful stuff that had happened, and a big shout out to the Briarags Gathering Place for opening up free of charge for the Human Rights Commission. The panel was very informative. The state police officer that was there had lots of good information. The hate task force was there, just really explaining what hate groups have done in this area and really the lack of structure that they have. So it was a very, I think, informative session for most people in that room and a very loving situation that occurred. So I was very grateful to everyone in this room that helps organize that. I think it was really important and a healing moment for us.
Thank you. There is no other business, so we are adjourned. There is no other business, so we are adjourned.